The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and Title of the Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Beryl Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Mary Bold School, Allyn Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Patricia Adair. Angel Beebe. Carl Buckhorn.
Present.
Naomi Davidson. Amy Farry.
Here.
Maria Panzarella.
Here.
Patricia Smith.
Here.
Samantha Spalding.
Here.
Lynn Torrell.
Here.
Also present, Mark Ayunuchi, Superintendent, Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Jean Yezzi, Principal of Bingham and Downing Schools, Mr. Steve Feely, Principal, Mary Bold School, Mr. James Winkelspeck, Vice Principal, Mary Bold School, Mrs. Lori Hines, Child Study Team Supervisor, and Mr. Butch Bruner, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the meetings from October 15th, regular executive and work session.
I make the motion to approve those minutes.
Motion made by Maria.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Lynn. Roll call.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Carl Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Abstain.
And then Ms. Spalding.
Yes to the regular meeting, yes to the executive session meeting, abstain from the work session. I need a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz.
Love it.
Seconded by Amy. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
I'm jumping.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding, before you continue, can I go back to the approval of minutes?
Yes.
Can I get approval from Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
And also Ms. Torrell.
Yes. I was just gonna say. I said it was, he did it, I go, wow, did I ask?
I haven't informed, my apologies.
Alright, that's okay.
I'm worried.
I accept it. I'm gonna maybe change.
I'll get better.
So Maria, your vote is?
Yes.
Yes, all three?
And yes.
Yes, all three. Okay. We all good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We heard from Mr. Colaveta, our auditor, that we're in during the work session, and our Volts representatives are busy with trying to win a soccer championship, so we'll resume student presentations in December. Correspondence, there's actually two letters, two things I'd like to speak about. We spoke in work session, I just want to say in our, at the Ed Foundation, Mrs. Morningbrook wrote a letter, and Mr. Ayunuchi will be reaching out to her, and Maria Panzarella volunteered to be board member liaison if need be. Mr. Ayunuchi will let her know. Also, Mrs. Kelly is here, and wanted to invite everybody out to the annual Christmas Tree Lighting and Fire Truck Parade, which is Sunday, November 30th. It's a little different this year, they're gonna begin at 6:00 PM, and there's gonna be a lot of activities geared toward children from 6:00 to 7:00. At 7:00, the truck, fire truck parade will start, and then Santa and Mrs. Claus will come off of the fire truck parade to join us in lighting our Christmas tree. So, wanted to extend the invitation to everybody, and make sure if you can, come out to that wonderful event in our town. And that's it for correspondence, is there any issues, questions? No? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment on agenda items only. This time, are there any public comment on agenda items? If there's no public comments, we're going to move on to the secretary slash director of curriculum report. Anything you want to say publicly?
Everything with food service has been going smoothly with Black Horse Bike Regional. Numbers are up 8% from the 13-14 school year. Transportation report has been submitted to the state, and also, as discussed during the work session, we discussed the purchase of a three-passenger school bus, which will be coming up later on for approval. I attended a number of meetings, and one thing I did want to bring up under curriculum was, in October, we had Set Franco come to do a bowling assembly with the students, and also do a parent night. I received a lot of feedback from many of the students and staff members about how positive they felt it was, and the parent night was very well attended. I would like to publicly thank the PTI for providing dinner for families who came out that evening, they had sausage and peppers, they had baked ziti, it was a very nice thing that they put together prior to that event. So I just wanted to thank everyone involved in. Hopefully, we were able to bring another presenter out in the spring, so that way, you know, October's anti-bullying month, but it's always, we want to make sure that we covered it across the year, so we're looking forward to an event this spring.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
I'll try to get through this without calling Dr. McCarron. But, District, just a couple things, District of Rollins, Steady, 139 Students Town, Replacements. I did want to publicly thank all the staff members that organized and executed the peace and respect for Red Ribbon Week activity back in October, the nurses and guidance counselors, and all the administration organizing those activities. I'm sure your children talked about some of those things that took place. Also, wanted to discuss the PD Day that we had take place on November 5th. There's a plethora of things that went on, and Mrs. Yezzi's school, all the teachers met in special areas, met at Red Downing for Google Apps for Education with Michelle Wynn, as well as the Subre Education. Feedback I got from that was wonderful, I have a chance to sit on some of that presentation. Michelle hasn't done as much work over at Bingham and Downing, she started with us last spring, she has over here at Volts, but she's quickly getting over there in the future. I know already using some of things, because they've sent, they've shared with me things on their Google Drive, and things like that, and some of things in the classroom.
That happens.
Like the next day, so, you know.
I watched the parent's presentation, actually, it's awesome.
So they're doing a great job with that. Barb Epstein did a wonderful job as well, presenting for literacy, and Mr. Pugh is here for a lot of that. Also, if you've ever seen Barb present, you have seen Barb present some of things, she puts on a performance like no other when it comes to engaging people during professional development. They're not sitting there listening to her for five hours, she literally has them working, but not things that's like, oh, I have to do this. It's like, it's good stuff that they bring back. Some of the evaluations that I've done so far this year, I've seen teachers doing things that she presented to them, like a week later, and it's great.
And this was literacy across content areas, so it wasn't just your, like, teachers who teach language arts. It was teachers who were teaching all different subject areas, whether it be special areas, social studies, science, and then incorporating literacy throughout.
That is one thing we talked about in that QRQ Sacramento Review last April, one of the things they discussed was how are you confusing literacy across the curriculum? So this touches on one of those things we looked through on, so we're excited about that. Crisis Team Meeting, we had an opportunity to meet, I want to thank Mr. Matty Smith Armetta for creating that presentation. Just reviewing protocols, we have a lot of new members in the staff, haven't been through anything, you know, we hope you never hack would be, but you always want to be prepared. So I want to thank them for organizing that, we have teachers, administrators, nurses, counselors, everybody like Crisis Team. And then finally, Mr. Winkelspeck and his dummies, Literally, he trained people in CPR. Well, he had CPR dummies, so he was literally. Just like we had him trained to be a CPR certified trainer.
He's me, I'm good.
He did a great job with that, and so all those people are good for?
Two years.
Two years. So, we're excited about that, and that's something that can be done anytime throughout the year, just any new day.
He didn't tell you you're gonna do a board member. Board members are gonna come get CPR certified, so get ready.
Anytime.
Get ready.
That is an opportunity, I had an opportunity to kind of roundtable last week, we still don't know what QRQ's gonna be again, they have a termative, it's gonna be three, five, seven years, so we're not really sure. We do our big year budget review with the county planned for January 22nd, January 22nd at 11:00 AM, so I'll give you, if we have a meeting planned after that, I'll try to have a summary of that county review in January. That is all I have to say.
Thank you. We reviewed principals, nurses, building and grounds reports, special education report, and work session. There was no other additional questions on any of those reports, correct?
Correct.
PTA report? Nothing? Okay. Any committee reports? Negotiations? No, no, no. Black Horse Bike? New Jersey School Board Association?
Yes.
Alright.
I attended the delegate assembly meeting, which was on the 15th of November, and Naomi is not here tonight, but she was a candidate running for one of the vice president positions. She was not elected, but she gave a wonderful introduction speech as a candidate, and the elections were fairly close. I think she's interested in down the road maybe running again, and she finally had a chance. People from central New Jersey, now they recognize her and her accomplishments, so I think she's got a chance in the future. She did really well that day. There were three resolutions that were discussed at the New Jersey School Boards Assembly, and they all were passed. The first one was a resolution by South Plainfield Board of Education, it's in reference with the School Ethics Commission. When something is filed with the School Ethics Commission, where they feel that possibly a board member did something that is unethical, the commission reviews what took place and makes a decision. Up to this point, that's always been private, it has not been made public. With this new resolution, New Jersey School Boards supports that those assessments of what took place be made available to local districts, that it will help us in making decisions whether or not something that we should be or should not be involved in is ethical or not, based on maybe if we have relatives working in the district, et cetera. Before, it was totally confidential. So that was the first resolution that has been, that was passed last Saturday. The second resolution was submitted by Greenwich Township in Warren County, in reference to New Jersey School Boards, supporting the fact that because local public school districts are locked into no more than a 2% increase in their budget annually, that the same be for out of school, this, sending our children out of our district to other private schools or to vocational high school. This particular school district pointed out that last year, to their local vocational school was cost, their costs were up 18%, and to the private schools, 31%. So there was a resolution that was put out, was that whatever the statutory cap is, it should be mandated to all schools, not just to the public schools, because it has a tremendous impact on our funds that we have to use for children. That was also passed.
Now, how does that, I don't know whether anybody could answer this question, how does that get supervised or made sure that vocational, I mean vocational schools are basically public education per se, but private schools, no. How does that domain fall down to a private school, say, you know, from a public official set, you have to keep within your 2% cap?
When, when our delegate assembly passes a resolution, approves a resolution that's being recommended by the executive board, it is, it then is presented to the State Board of Education and the Commission of Education. It's not law yet, but it's our way of saying, we feel this is a change that needs to take place. In reference to the vocational schools, having a number of years in a vocational school, where, where the difference is, the cap is in, vocational schools over the last probably eight, nine years now, throughout the state, have been charging a tuition fee. That's where they're getting the additional funding to offset the cost of, whether it's equipment that they're using, et cetera. And what this resolution was saying is that whatever the percentage is, whether it's 2%, 3%, 5%, it should be the same for all schools, because when we send children out of our district, it takes a tremendous bite out of the monies that we have available to run our own school systems. Just like the concept here, the idea we have that goes with this bus, we're putting out $25,000 to $30,000 a year to transport a handful of students. By getting this bus, within two years, we recoup that money, and from that point forward, now we have additional funds to spend someplace else. That's what this resolution kind of is like, it's, you know, making a level playing field.
I guess what my question is, where is the hope? Is there hope that lies, that this may become law?
Probably we'll find out at the next meeting, which is every six months.
Just progress on this?
Where, where the state stands, with the governor, the commissioner, and the state where this case stands, with supporting, changing the law so it applies to all schools.
Applies to all, right.
Okay? And we have one more resolution, and this one was eye-opening to me, I wasn't aware of an item called the doctrine of necessity. And this resolution was simply this, when it comes to the search for a superintendent in the school district, and those board members that can sit on the committee to do the interviewing and vote on the hiring of the superintendent, if there's any type of conflict, you're banned from doing it. Here's where the doctrine of necessity falls into place, and what this resolution was about. This doctrine of necessity has always existed, but sometimes the state does not allow a local board to use that as a reason to put board members that may have some type of conflict back on the panel that's interviewing superintendents and voting on that. And New Jersey School Boards felt that's not fair. There's a doctrine of necessity that exists, therefore, of a board of mine, if five of us are in conflict, you don't have a majority now that's making that decision. If that occurs, you then can invoke the doctrine of necessity. And what, what New Jersey School Board is pushing now with the state is, allow us to use that when this happens, instead of you coming in and saying, well, first let's take a look at the superintendent, oh, in this case you can, in this case you can't. It's simply, you can use it or you can't, that's the doctrine of necessity. The resolution that was pushed was that to allow that to happen, and not allow the state to say, you can't use that, but wait a minute, we have five, six, four members in conflict, we must use that, so that we, we have a well-rounded group of people making this very important decision of who the next superintendent is. So with this being approved, again, it's going forward to the state now, that that would be implemented, and that no one could stop us from using that doctrine, so that we could have all of our people involved. And it only applies to the hiring of the superintendent, in no other situation. So they, those were the resolutions that were passed, and so I wanted to report that to all of you. I also wanted to mention something here tonight, especially to the people attending the board meeting. Several of us, Lynn was there, Angel was there, Naomi was there, we went to the county board, county meeting for Gloucester and Camden County the other night, and we had a wonderful presentation by the superintendent from Mount Laurel on the core curriculum standards. There are 45 states in the United States that have bought into this concept and are using it to try and have to standardize curriculum throughout those 45 states. A startling statistic was stated by her that I wanted to share with everyone here, and especially with the public. The first level which children are assessed in those 45 states are in the third grade, the first assessment takes place. And the statistics have come back and shown that children that have habitual absenteeism, only 17% of those children score proficient or above. That means 83% of the children in third grade, if they had an attendance problem at school, lacked being proficient in those academic areas, which has a tremendous impact on that child's developmental skills through middle school, high school, and beyond. So it's critical for our families, that when the children are prior to coming to school, read to them, and when they start school, to support what they're doing at school, and don't let them stay home from school unless they absolutely are sick. It has a tremendous impact, negative impact, on young people learning when they're missing too much school.
And that was an unwillable.
That point was made, the same point, that it's fine the child can make up the work, but they can't make up the instruction.
That's right.
And there's where the key lies, to make sure that you're reaching these children. It was a very informative.
Very informative, yes.
Thank you for all attending, that's great that we have such a good representation.
Thank you.
No? Thank you. Thank you for your report. Any other questions, issues, concerns on your reports? Alright, we'll move along to property and transportation then. I need a motion to approve items number one through six, please.
Make a motion to approve one through six.
One, one through six. Hold on a minute, and eight, and nine.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Patty.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chaz.
Roll call.
Sorry, roll call.
Angel Beebe. Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Other property and transportation?
Number seven.
I, I was on it.
You were saying it.
Okay. Number seven? I don't know.
He just doesn't want you to get away from saying it, that's all.
He forgot to call two board members.
I know, he makes the mistake, and now he thinks I'm gonna make a mistake, so.
Somebody's trying to make another one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We also need to approve the following resolution, I need a motion to approve number seven.
I'll make that motion, number seven.
Motion made by Angel.
I'll second it, next.
Seconded by Lynn. The Runnymede Board of Education Resolution for submission of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for the years 2013, 14, 2014, 15, and 2015, 16. The resolution is number 1114-01, whereas the Department of Education requires New Jersey School Districts to submit three-year maintenance plans documenting required maintenance activities for each of its public school facilities, and whereas the required maintenance activities, as listed in the document for the various school facilities of the Runnymede Board of Education, are consistent with these requirements, and whereas all past and planned activities are reasonable to keep school facilities open and safe for use in their original condition and to keep their system warranties valid, now therefore be it resolved that the Runnymede Board of Education hereby authorizes a school administrator slash board secretary to submit the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for the Runnymede Board of Education in compliance with the Department of Education requirements. Roll call.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items number one through 10.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz.
Second.
Seconded by Amy. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's funny. Alright. Under finance, I need a motion to approve items number one through 10.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Patty.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Angel. Roll call.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items one through seven.
I'll make that motion to approve number one through seven.
Motion made by Angel.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Lynn. Roll call.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Farry.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Affirmative.
Ms. Beebe.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Policy and Public Relations, I need a motion to carry, whoa, you got me all messed up there, I need a motion to approve item number one through six.
I'll make that motion to approve one through six, with just a question, I put it on six, Hanson Holiday Hour, is there a date and time for this? Do you know?
Where do I have that, hold on.
Got a location?
Mrs. Yezzi, sorry about you, because you know the topic here, Hanson Holiday Hour, that's at both schools, correct?
Yes. All great. Dates and times? Um, we have all those dates and times, I can forward them.
I hope.
Oh, you have, I don't, I just.
I have, I have.
It's like, right around, I think it's the 3rd, 4th, and.
During the month of December, participating students will enjoy holiday story and craft from 3:00 to 5:00, excuse me, 3:00 to 3:50. All students will be assigned permission for, each parent must pick their child up promptly at 3:50. Students may choose to donate $1, all donations go directly to the local animal shelter to support family friends with unemployment or time, specific dates will be advertised at those schools.
Yeah, well, so, does it all entry schools? Yeah. Okay.
So the motion was made.
So I didn't make that motion, I'm sorry.
By Lynn, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. If there are any more questions, I need a roll call.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Done.
Ms. Farry.
Jill and Ashelle.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Torrell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
She also has a list of different ways to say yes.
That's usually.
He also.
It's usually for long meetings.
He also has a list for synonyms for present.
Yes.
At this time, we need, we are open for any public comment at this time, if there's any public comment.
Eleanor Kelly, 161 Forest Avenue, the councilwoman here in town, liaison to the Board of Education. And I see that we're purchasing a bus, and I understand now why that purchase is coming on board. We hope to save some, now what will the route be that the bus will take?
Well, it just. There's, there's no defiring, because this, for purposes of buses, the amount of money we've been paying for displaced students, could range anywhere from $180 to $300 a day, to put that student.
Displaced students mean students like homeless students that are leaving the town and elsewhere, it is our legal responsibility to transport them.
Because if a court decides that this student, let's say, is living in Audubon.
I understand we have about 20 homeless students, is that correct?
No.
Not that many?
Not that many. Currently, I think we have two that we're transporting on a daily basis, but let's say that the court says that you're gonna still educate the student in Runnymede, but now they're living in Audubon, they're living in Cherry Hill, it's our responsibility to get that student here.
Yeah, to pick them up in the morning, too.
To pick them up in the morning, and you have to drop them off in the afternoon.
Right. That's a lot. And you have to stick true to the times of the day, because it's in the student's best interest, and it's only fair to the student that they receive their full educational day from start to finish. So one of the difficulties we have is all the times that we need these buses to run, every other bus is running at that time with full runs. So in order for us to get those buses, in some cases, we're kind of at their mercy
kind of at their mercy to make sure that we can get the students here. So as Mr. Nishu was saying, be anywhere from a hundred to three hundred a day for each of those runs.
On top of sometimes if they're dropping a student off, let's say at Volts and they're dropped off at seven o'clock, then we have to provide supervision for that student.
Now, let me ask you, there's two. There's two now. Suppose next year, there's six.
Yes, that's why we're purchasing this bus so we can do that.
We save even more money. We also be able to use it for some of the school activities and functions instead of having to run a bus for those activities.
Who's the bus driver?
Who would be hiring that person?
Hire?
Yes. Somebody who obviously has their C D L license and everything else. We'd actually have, we'd have multiple drivers in case.
I like the resolutions that were passed by the association. How successful are they getting this up to the legislature and into law? How successful? What's their past record?
I believe we've been serving as a delegate for our board here. That was my fifth session, so two and a half years. The executive director reports on it. I say a fair portion, probably close to half of the resolutions get, get up there and they find the support. Our executive director is also sits on a, a special committee that the governor has handpicked. So he meets with the governor and the commissioner of education. I think the toughest one of the three that we passed is going to be the one of capping the vocational schools and other special schools.
Yeah, because.
Because they're going to fight.
That's a whole different domain.
Yes. Yes. But in all fairness to great, when you, and that's like, I mean, every district is facing those costs. At one school district, for them to send their children to the vocational school in that county, that was an eighteen percent increase in their costs. And for the other special schools that they had to send children with special needs, thirty-one percent increase in their budget. You know, it's, it's a lot.
Unreasonable, unreasonable. Yes. Thank you. I know that there's some people that won't be sitting next year. And who are they? That won't be sitting on the board next year? Ms. Terrilla and Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Well, I hope to be here at the December meeting for their last time on board, but on behalf of mayor of council, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
What you do here is unbelievable. It is really unbelievable. And you do it for no return. And it's just for the benefit of the children. We just thank you so much for your service.
That is our return, the benefit of the children.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
What? Okay. Any other public comment at this time? No? Okay. We are going to go into executive session. However, we will not be coming back to vote on anything. We are going, you'll see in a minute, we're going into executive session in regards to a student matter. So at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Amy. Whereas while the Center for Fire and Air Open Public Meetings Act requires all meetings in the Running School District Board of Education to be held in public, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B sets forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted to attend. And whereas the Running Public School District Board of Education has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the nine exemptions to the public set forth in NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B are listed below. And next to each exemption is a box within the, which the number of student issues, oh, excuse me, issues to be privately discussed that fall within that exemption shall be written. And after each exemption is a space where additional information, that will disclose as much information as possible about the decision, without undermining the purpose of the exemption shall be written. Now therefore be it resolved that the Running Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reason as outlined in NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B. Any matter which by expression provision of federal law, state statute, or rule of court shall be rendered confidential or excluded from discussion in public, more specifically a student matter. Whereas the length of the executive session is undetermined. However, the Running Public School District Board of Education will make in every attempt to estimate the time of the session prior to convening the session where the public meetings shall reconvene within, we believe it alone takes about fifteen minutes. And the Running Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business. However, there will be no action taken place. Now therefore be it resolved that the Running Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the Running Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that discussions of this aforementioned subject may be made public any time when the Running Public School District Board of Education attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Running Public School District Board of Education for the aforementioned reasons hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of the meeting during which the above discussion shall take place and hereby directs the board secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the board secretary of the next business day following this meeting shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one at the fees allowed by NJSA forty-seven colon one A dash one. Action on any item may, will not be taken in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call. We'll all.
Ms. Bebe. Mr. Buckton.
Yes.
Ms. Farry. Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Terrilla.
So we are going into executive session at seven thirty-nine and we'll be here for about fifteen minutes.